Welcome to the September 5th, 2023 Angels Camp City Council Meeting. Role copy, Gretel.
Mayor Herman.
Present.
Vice Mayor Moncada.
Present.
Councilmember Grollio.
Present.
Councilmember Scherrato.
Present.
Staff is present.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Amen.
To report out of closed session, item A, direction was given to staff. And for item B, I'll read the following statement. As mayor, it is my unfortunate obligation to inform you that councilmember Gretel Tascornia vacated her position on this city council on August 31st, 2023. Councilmember Tascornia served our community with honor, dignity, and worked tirelessly to better Angels Camp. While the circumstances leading to councilmember Tascornia to step down are temporary in time, to stay on the council, she would have been required to sever ties with her local business. While no elected official should have to choose between their elected position and business, as councilmembers, we do not make the rules or necessarily even agree with them, the rules we are now required to follow. I would like to personally thank Gretel for all of her hard work and for over the last several years. I know she will continue to be involved and improve to improve our community, and I would like to thank her for her service. Also on that note, Gretel has a statement that she has sent that I will read to you. Dear people of Angels Camp, I am so sad to be vacating my seat as one of your trusted city council members. It has been an amazing experience in my life, and please know that my heart and focus will not change just because my title has. I love this city, especially downtown, and I will always work to make it better. It is the best place to live in California, except for maybe on the beach. It has truly been an honor to represent the awesome citizens of this town. Forever grateful, Gretel. Okay, taking us to item four. Planning Commission appointment. The review and appointment of one planning commissioner member to fill a vacancy with a term set to expire on June 30th of 2023. Revs.
So we have three applicants who applied. Daniel Whitford, who could be in the audience. Matt Stammerjohn, who's in the audience. We have Joseph Jacobs, who had a family emergency and couldn't attend tonight. So normally what you guys have done in the past is have them stand up, introduce themselves, explain to you why they want to be on the planning commission, and you can ask additional questions of them, and then from there on, whoever you choose, you can appoint.
So. Thank you for that. So just because it's first in my packet, Daniel Whitford, would you like to step up at the podium and talk to us? We do have your application in front of us, so we know a little bit about you. Yeah.
Hello.
Hi. I think the mic's just on show, isn't it? So tell us about yourself.
Okay, first of all, obviously, I'm Daniel Whitford. I grew up in Angels Camp. I moved back in about 2019 and kind of decided, you know, this is my home, this is where I want to stay. And I see a lot of things going on in Angels Camp, and a lot of things are pending, and I kind of wonder what's going on. Someone brought up the planning commission position, and I put in my application, did a little research, and now I'm here.
So I'd like to ask a question. You talked in your experience about some extensive utility and public works and water and wastewater?
Correct.
Where was that?
Let's see, actually, my first job was at the City of Angels when I was in my early twenties and worked for municipalities such as Hetchy, City of Patterson, San Leandro, Murphy Sanitary District. And I do part-time contracting on the Flume.
You do during the outage?
Yes.
No, never? Thank you for that, because we need that so much. Okay.
I have a question. On a general engineering contractor, so you're still licensed and you're currently working, where are you doing that at?
I'm doing that out of Angels.
Okay.
I have a question. How do you feel in terms of making hard decisions? Sitting up here, it's always glamorous and fun, you just have to make hard decisions, and I know sometimes things like under the planning commission.
Yeah, it's, you know, I think the hard decisions are like, it's not necessarily black and white, it's the good with the good or what's better, but I think, you know, you have to think about the community basically, you know, if you've got your little headline above you, you know, initial statement, I mean, our decisions, I guess their decisions are just hard, and they require more help.
And as, who else?
Seth.
As for me, I have the aspect, three ways the city needs to approve on the most. I kind of like where you're going with some of this, like the Highway 49 bypass, sidewalks that do not connect downtown yet, which are all things that are, like sidewalks connecting are in the works, when Cal stands as different things. But I like those ideas you have there, because those are pretty main things that we're looking at and working to right now and coming up in the next couple of years. For me, I was no question, I just liked where you find was going to go with that.
Yeah, just kind of like to make Angels Camp a little smoother. And there's a lot of, it's just a lot of things that are kind of vacant, you know?
Yeah.
And you're kind of like, maybe that could do something, don't you?
Jeter, one more question for me. You've been a citizen of the city since 2019?
Correct.
And how many city council or planning commission meetings have you attended?
I have not attended.
Another question?
My only other question is if you don't get on the planning commission, how many entries does it count?
Potential.
My, I guess my only, my last question would be, Jeter, are you in full understanding of the job of the planning commission versus what the job of the city council is?
Well, since I haven't done it, I can't say that, you know?
Yeah.
But I'm willing to do my due diligence. I think I have a grasp, but do I?
Well, I would personally thank you for your time and your effort. It's not easy getting up there. Thank you for your interest, and it's nice to meet you.
Thank you.
So next, I'd like to invite Matthew Stammerjohn to introduce himself.
Good evening, I'm Matt Stammerjohn, and I've resided in, I've returned to the city in 1997 to start my chiropractic practice, and before that, I was traveling the world and going to college. Angels Camp probably has been my home of record, so growing up here. What else do you need to know? Introduce myself. I have lived in the city since 1997 for this last spell.
What means you want to?
Planning commission? Actually, I was warned not to do it by my father, who did it for 16 years or something in the seventies, eighties, and early nineties. I saw how much work that he had put into it, and he had his hands in a lot of things, and he was, he was a Landscor mayor, and he dedicated a lot of time to the city, and being an engineer himself, that would be a really good fit for the City of Angels. Planning commission, I didn't feel like I was ready for city council, wanted to get my fingers into it a little bit more and see what was going on. Does that answer it?
That kind of rolls into my question, so do you have an understanding of the planning commission's role versus the city council's role?
Yes, more advisory as a client commissioner, not making all the hard decisions, more working with staff and making suggestions to help the city council make better decisions.
How many meetings have you attended?
In the last couple of years, not so many, but when the tractor supply stuff was moving up, I was pretty well known, and that was several years ago. I couldn't put a number on it. But I've attended both city council and planning commission meetings, maybe two to three times a year throughout the years, maybe less in the years before, I think tractor supply.
I'll ask the same question. How do you feel about hard decisions, especially being a business owner?
And that's another reason I haven't put in for city council for a long time, making hard decisions, and I am a business owner, and sometimes people take things pretty darn rough. I think with planning commission, I wouldn't be so much in the forefront. You can call me a chicken if you want. But hard decisions, they need to be made. If it's, if it's going to save the city and help save the budget and everything else, then it needs to be done, rather than, I don't think the city has too much of a problem there, but yeah, not a problem.
So that's where I was going to tie in real quick, like.
No, you're good.
On the last part of what has seen you improve on the most, you have enforcement, like code enforcement, commercial building permit enforcement, and more enforcement, repair, removal of dangers, that is going to take, is all. So I just.
Well, I think, I think if it's spelled out in the city, and it's something that a commissioner or a city council member can stand behind and say, you know, this is, we're not making this up on the fly, then enforcement should be done. Right? If it's on the books.
I'm done, yeah.
Anybody else? Question? Well, thank you for your time, thank you for, it's not easy getting up there and doing this, but thank you for your time and interest.
Thanks.
I think it would be. So if possible, if we can have both Matt and Daniel, if we can have you step outside so that we can talk about you.
Talk about you.
Thank you. Amongst all our friends.
Yeah. So is it, is it this time that we are going to consider appointing one of the two applicants? I do want to speak to the vacancy for this seat. The reason for this vacancy is because Robert Moncada, who's here with us tonight, he did hold that planning commission seat for over eight years. He was dedicated and devoted, and I would like to, I would like to screech. I would like to publicly address him and thank him for his time and his dedication and his devotion for all of those years. So at this time, do we have any public comment about our decision that we're getting ready to make? Robert, you want to tell how hard or how easy it is? See, right, so have you come up to the podium? Awesome. Did you have anything worth saying?
I did, you were making me. So this goes for the public too. It's a lot of fun being on the, being a commissioner, and you get a lot of things accomplished. Some things don't happen right away, and take some time, but eventually, and hopefully it happens, right? I think everybody's got to put in their two cents if you're a citizen of this city, and that's the reason why I was there, and I thought I had done my duties, and then it was time to stand down and let somebody else step up.
Thanks, Rose.
This is gonna, this isn't even on here, I don't believe I need it, do I? I just wanted to ask the other gentleman that couldn't be here, is he not going to get a chance? I just.
He, no, he is going to get a chance. Application is still here. It's just unfortunate that they can't interview him like.
Right, exactly. I just wanted to make sure he got into.
And that.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want us to read his application?
Yes, please.
No.
We know that Joseph Jacobs, it's in, it's in the packets, if anybody grabbed a packet. Oh, it's not the full packet, my bad. Joseph Jacobs is the third applicant, and what I know is that this individual has lived in Angels Camp for about 11 months and is a registered voter. Their experience in knowledge and insight in planning or civic participation is that they are a realtor for 51 years and a broker for 16 years, a teacher at high school and coaching for 33 years. It doesn't quite say where any of that occurred, but that's their experience. And then from a city planning aspect, they feel that the city is doing these items well. Habitat homes, Utica Park, and wayfinding signs. And then from a planning aspect, what the city needs to improve on are those same, no, just kidding. Not those same three. Weed abatement, dead shrubs, and tree removal we need to improve on. Family activity facilities, a rec center with a pool or bowling, and bringing businesses back downtown. So that's what we know about Joseph Jacobs. Okay, so any more public comment or anybody online, Rose?
No comments online. All can people online.
But no hands raised? Okay, so at this time, we'll close public comment, and I will bring it back to council for discussion and/or a motion to move forward.
My only question, do we have to give Joseph time to speak in this, or is this application process just? Okay, so we have the most important thing, because he had it, okay. All right, so for me, I'll go first. Daniel, for me, has what he wants to work on and improve on, fits more into it for me than what Matt does. I'll say I don't think enforcement and that type of stuff is really important, but, you know, the vacant businesses trying to, trying to do stuff like with NAPA, which we already have a view planned with that, but the sidewalks, he's thinking about the same type of things that I am at this moment. So for me, my vote is for Daniel, just because of what the application lines up with my thinking.
So I think it's great that we have so much interest for one position, because as we know in the past, there isn't typically a lot of interest in these public positions. Having said that, I think that both candidates are well qualified and can do the job, so I'm kind of split.
And even Jacob, who's not here, I liked what he said about, you know, the rec center.
Yeah, good ideas on three of them.
We're going to take them off. I do agree it's going to be a tough decision. I agree that both, all three candidates would be a likely fit. I, I am leaning towards Mr. Stammerjohn for the reasons of, I feel that he has a better understanding of city council, I'm sorry, of planning versus city council, as well as his involvement. I think he's been to several of the meetings. I think that maybe he's been a little bit more boots-on-the-ground involved in the last couple of years, so maybe that will help in a transition for him on a onboarding training kind of situation. So yeah, that's kind of the direction I'm leaning there.
So hard. Just remember, you have to make a motion on who you want. Right. I do like that Daniel has a general engineering background and background in the public works, water, wastewater, but that might be more helpful on city council. So, yeah, I mean, Matt's been super involved, he's been coming to a ton of meetings and so. Unfortunately, it makes it hard, yeah.
I will make a motion to appoint Matthew Stammerjohn for city council. I'm sorry for, God bless. For planning, clarify that, please.
Yeah, I will second that motion.
Let's see, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So Rose, that passes on a three to one. And can bring them back in? Anybody? We are taking the oath of office.
Right.
Right away, right?
You're going to pop and poo, and I will do the oath.
Thank you. So we have to talk about you. Thank you both for your time and your effort and your interest. It was not an easy decision, I can say that, and we found great qualities in both of you. We wanted to help both of you, but Rebecca wouldn't let us. So unfortunately, we did have to make a decision, and it was voted on to welcome Matt Stammerjohn to our plan. So I tried city council, and they wouldn't let me do that either. So at this time, Matt, if you could come up, Rose will read you the oath of office.
Stan, I don't want to remind you of this, so you both follow along. If you can raise your hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Matthew Aaron Stammerjohn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm that I.
Or affirm that I.
Will support and defend.
Will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all offense.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely.
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
That I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter. Last time I did that, it shone my head.
Bring the clippers.
That's it, I'll finish the rest, but you'll be here for me soon.
Thank you. Okay, thanks again. Yeah, go, go, go.
And I don't know if it was second, but three applicants, that was amazing. Yeah, so thank you, and before, we got like one, I mean, it's wonderful that there was that much interest, so thank you.
Dan, Dan, hope to see you again.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, moving on to item five, is approval of the agenda as posted or amended. Does anybody have any amendments to make to the agenda as posted?
Jen, I have a question. Why do you split over here? It's 5 in June 30 and 2023.
26 is what that should say.
Oh, he ended his term in 2023, is what I meant to say, but yeah, it does say 20, it should say 26.
Now, where we were looking at.
Under the planning commission. I was thinking of Robert Woodhill when I put the date, so that's why.
So what Olga is saying, Matt, is we have you in 2020, 2016.
Correct.
For and. And once again, approval of the agenda, or any, any public need to make any modifications to the agenda? Okay, I'll be.
I'll take the first one.
Alvin?
I'll second. Caroline?
All in favor?
Aye.
That takes us to item six, which is public comment. The public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to the city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda, and speakers will be limited to five minutes per person. Do we have any public comment here tonight? And anybody online, Rose, raising her hand? Case the no public comment, we will close that. Item seven is consent agenda, and the one item that we have on consent tonight is the approval of the draft minutes from August 15th. Does anybody have any reason to pull that? Okay. Any public comment on our consent?
I'm going to approve consent.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
301, Rose. So item eight is our regular agenda, and 8A is a presentation from Amy Augustine, our city planner, for the Utica Park.
While we're queuing that up, how many of you are here to hear about Utica Park? So nobody cares about Utica Park, as we. I will probably tell you more than you ever wanted to know about Utica Park, and we're going to start with slide number three, which is the conceptual plan for Utica Park. And I'm going to give you a fair amount of background on this, because I know a lot of people think that Utica Park was supposed to be a new playground, and that was all that it was supposed to be. These 750 members of the community who commented on what they wanted to see in the park disagreed, and as you'll see, it became a plan to include things like an amphitheater, because this is a rural recreation and tourism program, and I will show you the people who actually proposed that there be an amphitheater, and what kind of amphitheater, and how many people it should accommodate, and what it should be used for. The purpose is to have theater in the park, local theater production companies from the high school. We have a 100-member band, which is one of the oldest community bands in the United States. A member of that band talked about what he'd like to see at the amphitheater, as well as having appearances there when there's an emergency. I don't know how many of you were ever present for the public safety power shut offs that we have. We did briefings there, we held them underneath the pavilion at the time, and we were looking for something a little bit easier for people to gather around and actually see the person speaking and be able to answer questions and whatnot. So that's one of the reasons that is there, as well as the fact that the grant funding source required that you have a tourism component to your project, and the thought was this would bring more people downtown to shop in the local shops. There is also bocce courts proposed, hard courts for both basketball and pickleball. There is renovation of the existing pavilion, in part because right now you have one large expanse, and the idea is we have to rent it out to one person, and they use that whole facility. Sometimes we have three smaller groups who want to use it, and we're going to try to design it so that you can actually have three smaller groups use it at the same time if necessary. The new playground, as you know, there were, there was deterioration at some of the slides. They'd rip you apart pretty good if you went down them. I don't know if any of you ever got to look at that before we took it out. We're also looking at doing some outdoor gym equipment for adults, not just children.
For what?
Adults, outdoor exercise equipment for teens and adults, sitting areas for teenagers to talk, and we'll explain how that got included in the proposal. Sitting areas for teenagers to talk, and we'll explain how that got included in the proposal. New bathrooms, the number one request from the public was, we hate, not request, but we hate the bathrooms you have, please get better ones. So we are in fact adding new bathrooms. Go ahead for the next slide.
Where is that?
There will also be a trail that will go around it and go to each one of the historic types of mining equipment that's there that you'll be able to walk around, and yes, you have.
Sorry, the back to the other, what kind of exercise equipment? Is that what you said?
Exercise equipment for adults.
What, what did that entail? I'm not understanding that.
So there's outdoor exercise equipment for things like you would do at a gym, but you can do it outside in a park. So in other words, if you wanted to do stretching exercises, you wouldn't go to the children's playground, you would go to this.
Oh, there's a designated area.
You got it, and there's special equipment that, that is used for full-size people and not five-year-olds.
The pull-up bars are high.
Yeah, like pull-up bars.
The pull-up bars are high.
What I'm, my concern is.
So actually, what I'm going to do, I'm having hold, and she's going to go ahead and do the presentation and everyone should be.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So what we'll have her do is go through the presentation and then we'll open up public comments. There's going to be a lot of questions, so just kind of just goes down and then you'll have your, and then we'll have Amy address questions as best she can.
And the things that I will talk about in addition to the components of the project is what the background was, the funding source, and how much outreach was required for it. The fact that there is still a stakeholder group that is going to be participating in the final design of the project because that was a conceptual plan, you saw. It was not a final design, it was just a conceptual plan to identify what would go into the park and approximately where it would go in the park. What happened with trees and why some were removed and some were retained. All of the monuments in the park and what we plan to do with them. Parking, safety, and next slide. And you'll notice that vision statement matches the vision statement that is on the wall behind our city council members. This is from the Angels Camp strategic plan and it basically says that the whole idea behind most of the things we do here at the city council and in the city is to preserve our history and provide a safe and thriving community devoted to families, businesses, and visitors. And what I'm going to emphasize in the park design is we looked at families, businesses, and visitors. Next slide please. Go ahead, go ahead, next one. We're also trying to implement some specific elements of the strategic plan that was adopted by the city council, enhancing the city's appearance. I know it does not look that way right now at the park, but when we are done, we expect to have a plan that's integrated. All the buildings will look like they were designed at the same time and tied together. Yes, there will be green grass that will be back there and native plants and things like roofs that will have metal roofs on them and sort of some rustic appearing buildings. We're also looking at economic development. I've already explained that we are including the amphitheater and stage there to bring in all sorts of activities, economic development while using the city's social, cultural, environmental, and aesthetic resources. Obviously, Mark Twain is a big element of this. One of the things we would love to have at the amphitheater would be some Mark Twain reenactors doing some of the stories that Mark Twain wrote.
Next slide.
Several other elements of the strategic plan for the city council that are being implemented through this park include circulation. We have, we have purchased two parcels adjacent to the park. Napa has been purchased by the city to add parking. The parcel adjacent to Napa has been purchased by the city to add a new roadway that can come out and improve the circulation at the park. All of you know how narrow Sam's Way is. When we had T G N E here for the public safety power shut offs, the one thing that, and also when we've had the Red Cross here, they've all come to the city and said, you really need to improve the way to get in and out of that park. We cannot get our trucks with our emergency response supplies in and out. We need you to improve the circulation. So that's both in and out of the park and within the park, we're hoping to improve that. Community identity, obviously, Mark Twain's going to be a large element of that as well as all of the equipment that was mining equipment there. We hope to show everybody what it was used for when it was a mine and how it tied in and what it looked like originally while it was there. Land use, well-designed and to reflect the rural character of the community as well as, next slide. So that is what the city's goals are for the city. The grant itself emphasizes health for the residents, all residents, seniors, five-year-olds, everybody in the high school. It wants everybody to have some activity that's physically based in that park. Also visitors, again, amphitheater, and having a trailhead for the Angels Creek Trail. We are also planning to put that in the park, next slide. So we started with a lot of outreach and we ended up reaching seven hundred and fifty individual people who gave us input. We started at the Frog Jump Parade because we figured we could get not only children, but their grandparents who might be there watching their kids, the parents who might be with their kids, that little gentleman in the hoodie that you see. He and his best friend decided that they wanted a baseball field and so they sat there and we had jars set up so that they could put chips in it and say what they wanted. Well, they decided they wanted that baseball field real bad to the point where we had to start policing it because they were putting too many chips into the jars to make sure that they could get their baseball field. To the right there was the Fireman's Pancake Breakfast. Again, we got a lot of community members who do a lot in the community, attend a lot of community events to give us input on what they wanted to see in the park. Next slide. Brett Park High School, we went to their leadership class. They were the very first place we visited. We also went to their high school physical education classes, every single one of them in a single day. They all sat down, threw out what they wanted to see, why they wanted to see it, and where they wanted to see it. And I will tell you, in nineteen thirty-one, when the park was originally designed, the way they designed it, they went to Brett Park High School and asked the high school students to design the park and held a design competition. So that is why we went to Brett Park and that with all the students that we hooded and asked them for their input and design. We went to Wood Hill Village and that gentleman right there told us about the concerts that they have had, their one hundred-piece community band and why we needed to, how we needed to design it for theater productions and what have you at the park. Next slide. And then the farmer's market. That's where we saw an enormous number of seniors who were walking around and one lady in a wheelchair with her daughter pushing her, who informed us, when we asked her what was most difficult or what they liked best about the park, they said, we cannot see our grandchildren play at the playground because we can't get a walker to go there. We cannot get our wheelchair to go there. And then the daughter burst into tears because she was so glad that somebody had asked about having her mother be able to access sites on the area. So we are working really hard to make the main part of the park ADA accessible, not just for seniors and people with disabilities, but also some of the playground equipment so that kids, next slide. We also went to a children's story hour where we met kids that had one arm and such and we want them to be able to participate on the children's playground equipment. So that also went into the design, next slide. Planning Commission, we held some design meetings here with developers who happened to be there. I'm trying to remember if that was the one with Tractor Supply or not, but we had a few developers present and they actually helped us do some design at that particular one, next slide. And of course, we attended three separate city council member meetings, city council meetings to get input. We had drop-in days at the park where we would show up on holidays and ask individuals there what they wanted to see in the park. We went to the Sierra Hope Food Pantry to ask that part of the community who doesn't usually get to have a say what they wanted to see in the park. The Craft and Chicks Antique Craft Fair, Women, Infants, Children Clinic at St. Catherine's, and we even attended a homeowners association meeting at Greenhorn Creek where they were raising money for the park. Next slide. The reason I bring all this up is because, again, most of us think this was supposed to be, it was all supposed to be a playground. Well, when you talk to the community, they wanted it to be an all-age thing where all ages could come together, where visitors and residents could come together. That's why we are, as our grant says, we will, bringing together a park design committee. We've already talked to the high school and they will have representation on that park design committee so that as we get a preliminary design, they'll be able to still help us refine exactly what's going to go in there, exactly what it's going to look like, what they do or don't like. We are going to be talking to the business community. We've got a person with disabilities who's going to be participating on that committee as well as, I know I'm forgetting several people who are also going to be on the committee for state voter outreach. But basically, all those, oh, the high school, the leadership class is also going to be serving on that committee. Next slide. I wanted to tell you a little bit about the people that were hired to do the project. This is a design and build contract. Boyer Construction is the entity that we hired to do this. The reasons we hired them was because they are basically designing it without charging us so that they can put all the money into construction. They are currently looking at things like where, if I was a parent, would I want my children to be in the playground? Would I want to be able to see them? Or do we want them clear across on the other side of the playground? Where is it easiest to park for accessibility requirements? Things like that. Some of the projects they've been doing are Fireball Lodge, which is up near Brooklyn. They did both the Tuolumne and Brooklyn Resilience Project, Summerville, Sonora High School, they're very community-oriented. And when Robert Boyer came onto the site, he looked at and he said, this is something I would be proud to put my name on. And that is how he is going about designing this. He knows his name's going to be on it and his reputation. So he is bending over backwards to make sure that he has something here he will be proud of when he is done and that the community can be proud of when they're done. I'll show you a few examples of his work, next slide. Some of the stuff he's done at Berkeley Tuolumne Camp, Asian Theater there, next slide. Some of the basketball courts and stuff and animal shelter that he worked on, next slide. This is the Resiliency Center in Tuolumne and in Brooklyn and you'll notice on that slide on the right, you'll see a lot of green grass. Yes, he will likely be putting sod down again at our park once we get to that point, next slide. Now comes the geotechnical issues that we've all heard about. You'll see a line, a red line going through there, that is the mother load. When you hear, I struck the mother load, that is the mother load vein that goes through the city and Sonora and other parts, Tuolumne, Calaveras, and Norcali. It physically goes through Utica Park and continues on to the property that we just purchased. That's a long way of saying we always knew there would be a portion or portions of this site that we would not be able to build on because of mine shafts. There is an area to the north of that where there had been a study done that said at least an acre of it would still be developable, developable, I'll get that spit out. And so that's why we proceeded with this project and purchased that adjacent property. We also knew that we could use that area's open space for events, whether or not there was a structure on it. We have talked to two geotechnical firms who are both busy right now and do not want to get involved in a project where there's only a budget of three million dollars. They like working on bigger projects where there are some geotechnical issues. So we are looking for a third entity. And right now, it appears that we will probably not be able to put the seating for the amphitheater in the pit, but that we will likely put things that aren't structures over on that side. We can still put the trail. If we needed to swap the playground with the amphitheater, we could do that. We can extend some of the parking area out and perhaps do engineer fill. So that is why you do not see a site plan yet. It's because we're trying to get ahold of the details from a geotechnical engineer to show us exactly how heavy a structure we can put on that portion of the site. But again, we will still have the trail there, we will still have bocce courts, we will still have basketball courts, we will still have play equipment and gym equipment because again, those are not structured. Next slide. Tree removal. We have the San Martin County Office of Education, Greater Valley Conservation Corps, very long name, do all the vegetation removal on site. Why? Because one, you get extra points on your grant if you ask them. And two, because all the people that participated, they were trained. They can now go from this job where they got this training out and get a job with the Forest Service. And so we basically train people to get living wage jobs by having that entity do our clearing for us on the site as well as we now will be able to partner with them to do other clearing that the city needs on a regular basis. Memorial Trees, just wanted to add that quickly. We've had several people approach us who have had loved ones and they've asked if they can purchase a tree to replant in the park in the name of their loved one. Yes, we will be establishing a list so that people can do that and so far, we've had a huge amount of interest in that. Next slide. So sixteen trees were evaluated, nine were removed. Next slide. You can't see that very well, but what that, every time it's highlighted in yellow, it said, something's going to get damaged, somebody's going to potentially get killed or will mess up somebody's car if we don't pick that tree up. So once it were yellow, basically, they were rotted in the middle, they were rated as poor, risk was rated as high, those were removed. We basically had a whole bunch more that were bare with a moderate risk and we retained most of those. Next slide. We removed several that were poor and moderate risk because in order to maintain them, we were told you would have to go out and improve fifteen percent this year, fifteen percent next year, fifteen percent the year after that. And pretty soon you would have a tree that had like a stump, hardly any branches, and about then it would die. So for economic reasons and for maintenance reasons, we went ahead and took those out. Next slide. And the next. Some of the trees we removed, there was, there were several comments about, hey, why didn't you take the trees out before you had a final site plan? Well, the reason was we didn't take any tree out that wasn't a risk to either property or keep them. The one that was in the middle of the playground, we took out because it was rotted on the interior and the arborist told us to remove it or somebody would be injured. The one in the middle, that black walnut, you can see how deteriorated it was. And then tree number three two seven four on the left was actually leaning towards the highway and there was a fear that it would fall onto the highway. Next slide. You'll see that yellow area and you're probably thinking, well, you removed all those? Why did you remove all those? Next slide. All those were Atlantis, Chinese Tree of Heaven. Those are commonly referred to by botanists as weeds. They are a non-native tree that does not allow anything else to grow near it. And so we are, we removed those and we removed privet, which grows really, really fast. Any of you who are gardeners have probably had to get rid of it over and over and over again. And all that now that was in that corner, next slide, was basically privet and Atlantis, next slide. We also took out some of those trees that burned. We also took out some of those trees that burned. We didn't evaluate them, but after the fire, they were burnt to a crisp, so those were taken in. I'm a biologist and a botanist, and I would feel terrible if a tree was taken out that didn't need to get taken out. So, I know I was very cautious, I know the arborist was very cautious, and we had very long discussions with them about each and every tree before they were moved in. Monuments. Every monument that was in the park before we started is still in the park. We have talked to each and every individual who put one of those monuments there, talked to them about what the potential fate of those monuments will be. Next slide. We talked to the veterans about their monument, and whether, if it was going to get moved, what we would do. Most of the people we talked to said, "We would like to rededicate the plaque if you move it to another location." We have agreed to that, we have their names, that will occur if and only if we need to relocate the monument. Next slide. Those are more of the monuments, and yes, we talked with those folks. Next slide. The Utica Mine North Shaft Monument was temporarily removed because the walnut tree was being taken down, and we didn't want it damaged, but it was replaced back in its original position. The fountain, we spoke with the daughter of Isabel, and she is in agreement that if we have to relocate the fountain, we will take that plaque off, and we will re-dedicate it at a new fountain. Next slide. Lastly, parking. There's been some talk about putting parking, more parking at the park. Right now, at the farmer's market, how many of you have been to the new farmer's market over the years? It's probably a little easier to park there because there's 97 parking spaces. We have approximately 50 at the current park. So, yes, we are looking at adding some parking, potentially on the subway. The grant will not pay for parking, so we will be having to use money from another source for that. We are looking at doing a two-level parking structure at, so you can park on top where Napa and the adjacent parcel are, then come around to the back and park there. As is, if we remove the weeds and just gravel, and there's nothing that we don't know about once we've removed the weeds, we would be able to estimate, get approximately 26 more parking spaces just there. Next slide. Council is also adding parking up top. They're going to re-stripe all of the parking up top, so there are actually parking spaces along the highway. They're putting in new sidewalks, so you'll be able to walk all the way along there on sidewalks. And we are reopening the original entrance to the park. There's those steps that used to be there. We're going to reopen those steps so that you can come in without having to walk down Sam's Way in order to get into the park and get, remember, while you're trying to do that. I was going to show you a working plan, but because of our geotechnical issues, we're still being held up. So, next slide. So basically, what we have is what we have now. We are hoping to, what, maybe in a month, have some sort of preliminary plan and be able to get our stakeholders together to start providing feedback on that. And with that, hopefully, I've answered some of your questions, and if not, I'd be happy to answer any remaining questions that you have.
Let's maybe go ahead and let the public start asking. Do you want to start asking some of our questions?
Yeah.
Okay. So at this time, I'd like to open it up for public comment, and here's some of the public's questions, and then we'll gather those questions, and then we'll have Amy come back up and address any concerns or questions that you may, before we start speaking.
Oh my God. Sorry, Lauren. Thank you, guys. You still need to know who I am? Lorraine Darby. My house is off 16th Street, and I had not heard anybody addressing that they spoke to any homeowners along that bush street. Not one. At the Green Creek that you talked to, that you talked to the businesses, you talked to whoever, but I did not hear any residential air. Were you ever spoke to?
No, that was the only thing that I have to say, is that it doesn't seem like you guys care much about us, the homeowner, the people that live right in, that this is affecting every day of our life. Every day, no one has spoke to me. I live right across from the bathrooms on that big plan, old bathrooms that everybody hates so much. That's my house. Nobody has spoke to me once.
Not once.
All the trees came down, they blocked us in. Oh, no, we don't have that access. But you'd think you guys would know that, because you have a mass, you just showed it.
I have not had anybody approach me or any of my children who own homes along there also about the noise level or how long the noise is going to go on. We live there, this is our home, we reside there. We are not tourists that come once a year for one day. We're there every day. This is our home. So I'd like to hear about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Darby. That's a show of public comment.
I'm in the bottom of 1090 Utica Lane. I also have a conditional leave permit for the mansion, and one question that I have is the amphitheater changes. With the requirement that the businesses having to return to the noises, what's not being addressed is the noise travel going all the way up to Mount Pointe Road. Also, the concerns of the noise from that amphitheater directly in front of the homes, as Aaron had said. I'm concerned about the relocation. I understand that there are challenges, but flipping that toward current park structure is located is not favorable to the homeowners on Utica Lane. When they first started, the majority of the homeowners on Utica Lane were for a lot of these options, given that they were going to be towards the canyon. But now that there's changes are going to be made, I don't know where and how you're going to resolve that, because I not only worry business lives in one of those homes, also having a father that lived there and my neighbor is a serious concern about how that's going to impact all of daily lives and the fact that it travels. Even with the farming projects on Friday night, you can hear the sound all the way up to Mount Pointe. So, and with the trees, I know that you're going to be planting new trees, but that is no longer there, and it's going to be ruined before that becomes another noise area on the street. Also, I have not been talked to by the city council, or should we staff related to any of these changes? And when this both got started, the biggest fire went the neighborhood. And so it's really disheartening to see that these changes are going ahead, and not a single one of us have been talked to about it, and it's really startling to, we wouldn't be here tonight if we weren't unhappy with the way that they should move forward.
Sure. Hey, go. You need some address? Cool. Going with what Amanda said a little bit about the changes of the design, and have we figured out who's going to be on this committee? Why haven't we figured out who's going to be on the committee yet if we have designs going on? And how long will it keep changing until we figure out an actual plan? And if it's going to be a good one?
Trevor Lola, 1110 Suzanne Drive. I'm probably less impacted day-to-day than most of these people being in Selton Park. I, my, my, I can't see my role, but what I find myself doing a lot is trying to talk to as many of you as I can, people involved with the city, and then talking to them, and trying to bring all of those concerns into one message that then can be shared. I think there's a lot of lack of transparency with this project, and I don't mean that in a wrong way. You know, I would say, there's a lot of questions, and the reason there are questions is, there's not regular answers. So, you know, something that I think would help or that I would like to see is maybe more regular public statements that can be shared on social media, maybe, you know, videos quarterly of, "Here's updated progress, here's what's going on, here's what's happened, wrote the snag dream hit." You know, whether it be just, you know, a 10-minute video from the city that can be shared on social media, a two-page newsletter, something like that that can be shared, because now, see, there's a lot more people in the city that are in this room that are not going to get this information, and then it would be helpful so that everybody knows what's going on, and there would be maybe less concern, less frustration about what the hell is going on with this project. One other thing I would like to hear is, I did not see any of this, and I know it's tangent upon more geophysical surveys, all those kind of things, but a timeline. Do we have any kind of idea of, you know, is there a timeline on the grant? Is there a deadline of when that money has to be spent and allocated? You know, is this going to be something that, you know, Aaron and everybody else has to deal with for two years, three years, or 10 years? You know, how long is this going to happen that we, you know, it's hard for me, as someone trying to advocate for the city as much as I can, especially to people that are maybe new to our city, to constantly say, "Well, here's the plan, it's going to be really great, it's going to be really good when it's done." But I can only do that for so long before, I don't even know, it's going to be great. I'm sure it will be when it's done, but that's a big question. Thank you.
At Ballpark, Utica Lane. The problem I have with the amphitheater is that it affects the whole town, let alone goes in one place, and the whole town is affected anyway. And I don't know what kind of structure that would be so harmful that would have to be put, put there, instead of be moved down, went down to the south instead of to the north of the park. Seems to mean that when people are dodging, somebody's dodging making the decisions, not here to read people. Experts are supposed to know so much, and it was so bad, the whole mother lode, as was explained, it would be an effect. The house that I'm in is 150 years old, it had been down by now if there was going to be a problem, so I just think, somebody's exaggerating the problem and not facing the issue. Yes, to make hard decisions, nobody wants to make the decision, or really make a plan that seems like plowing to the side of the hill somewhere, and it could be dirt or rock and that, or what kind of structure that they're afraid. Tishner had a plan to build office buildings there or something, and, you know, he really ran out of money, and nobody said he could never do it. So, anyway, I think that there needs to be some more, you know, maybe a stagey, or somebody else come down. Who's approving or not approving what it is, but it seemed like, you know, kind of excuses blocking the whole process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? And about online, do we have anyone who can answer that for us? TJ Good?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Oh, hi, thanks. This is TJ Gallagher, 1100 Echo. I just, just a quick thing about the duck girl unabated all summer, and it was true to second, I washed my car at 10 o'clock, and my unit was thick of dust, like, and you know, we're coming into the fall season when the lakes are more in fall, where valley dew is actually a real thing, and that's dust-related. I just, you know, I'm just concerned about all the dust and lack of abatement from that, not only from the project and the shipping and all that, and that, but it's still really dusty. And then, where the trees in the park were taken out, you know, wasn't watered all summer, they watered some trees and stuff, but that lot was, has a duck field basically for the whole entire summer, and it's been really brutal. So, any kind of, you know, abatement on that, I'd love to go, yeah, I'd really appreciate it. I'd definitely, and that's, oh, another thing, I'm, you know, I'm just curious, I'm a family, family as well, I'm secure, I'm here presenting, you know, the band too, but that's basically it. But thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment at this time, and Amy, if you can close with your recap of a lot of these things.
Yeah, I wanted to clarify, that was a consideration, the relocation of the amphitheater. It is not on a plan saying that that's where it's going to go, and if there was, is no way to design it so that it would not be blurring music straight into the people who live there, it will not be located there. So, that's that. Second, I-
So, can I stop you just? So, can you please clarify, so the situation is that the geotech report has come back not favorable for the amphitheater to be in the valley, in the-
In the canyon.
In the canyon, you call it.
Tentatively, yes.
Okay, so at this time, we're looking for reconsideration and options, Plan B, Plan C?
Plan B, Plan C, Plan B.
Okay, and the process is, at, at the time that you're arriving at what Plan B is and what Plan C is, what is the, what is the public outreach, or is that just through the stakeholder group, or is that through city council? What is that plan?
So that will be through the stakeholder group.
Okay.
And basically, what we do is, we first rely upon the engineer and the builder to tell us where it physically can go, what are our options. Give us something to start with, where things can go. And then, we meet with the stakeholder group, that rearrange, and I would strongly suggest that we have at least one member of a resident who lives there, being on the stakeholder group. We have, in fact, met with some of the residents. We did not personally go and talk to each and every one of them. We did our outreach community-wide and at the farmer's market, so some of you did run into one of our booths. We did not go individually to any resident in the city, but we did meet with some individually who were concerned about how our tree removal was going. And we worked with them one-on-one, and we went out and personally visited with them and asked what we could do to make things right for them.
So just, just for numbers, how many homes, how many homes are right there alongside Utica Parks? There are eight?
I was going to say five. I was going to say five.
How many of those, five, would you say that you were in direct communication with?
Two.
Okay.
I don't know. Well, two and a half. Eight.
So, but we, so we didn't reach out to the homeowners, and it sounds like when we started construction, we also did not reach out?
When we started vegetation clearing, no. What we did instead was we did, like, "Hey, we're getting ready to start on our website and social media."
We didn't actually go physically?
We did not physically go.
And we're, and we're going to imprint that in the future?
Yes, sure.
We're going to do door hangers, notifications, to put that at our contractor or whatever.
Sure. Aaron, when you reached out to me and you asked me, did anyone reach out to you after that?
They came, you came, but then, my only request was that when they did take that tree, that I was notified, and nobody notified.
Okay.
That was really cool. That made me feel like you guys really cared.
Yeah.
That really drove it home.
And I knew that you had a baby there.
Yeah, and so when I wasn't notified after that, that was weird.
I apologize.
I don't know, that just kind of looked-
I felt bad about that, I do apologize.
Reached out to, and then nothing happened after that, it was kind of like a big-
That's unfortunate.
Hmm.
And it wasn't because we didn't care, it was because we spoke-
I mean, because I have another neighbor too, she was actually trapped in there while the-
Yes, I remember.
I wasn't home, so like, she had newborn.
Yeah.
Yeah, I also have a child, but it was her I was actually concerned about too. Yeah.
Some of the people we did reach out to are looking forward to it as enhancing their property values. So basically, when we did our design and outreach and conceptual plan, the idea was, okay, there's been a park there before, there's a certain level of disturbance that you're used to because there was a park, you're used to a certain level of noise. What can we do, what can we design that isn't going to cause that to increase significantly? We are still working at that level, and obviously, an amphitheater may not be able to go where might be most convenient. Maybe we'll end up having to stick it somewhere else.
I think it's important to let them know why we have to have the amphitheater.
Yes, yes.
Because we have to have the amphitheater. It's part of the-
It's part of the ground. And it's part of the, part of the economic development portion of this that benefits other parts of the town. And, but not to the expense that we're going to have people having concerts at 11 o'clock or 12 o'clock. We have requirements on the farmer's market when it's there. They can't make noise after certain periods of time, just as Amanda knows on her, when she has weddings there. We limit the amount of time she can have dance in her plant at the Utica Mansion. Same kind of requirements would be applied to the city for any kind of special event. We would have, so we would be keeping those parameters the same. Communication certainly can be expressed with the landowners who are right there. And as I said, obviously, at least one needs to be on our stakeholder committee, maybe two. We have worked with, during the clearing, we were called out to the modular that's up on top. And we worked with that individual to show her exactly where we can have events, where we can plant oleanders to keep things screened from her house and the park. So, we worked it out individually, one-on-one with that person. Anyone with a concern, please feel free to call me. At any time, I'm happy to talk to you and incorporate any concerns or problems.
Amy, so that just about closes, that just about addresses all of the comments that were brought in.
All right, so just real quick on the geotechnical survey?
Yes.
Wasn't recommended, but doesn't show we rule that out completely, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So, that was one of my questions I have. But at this point, we are going to close public comment and we're going to bring it back to council and we're going to start with Allen and we're going to start asking our questions of Amy.
Okay. This will address part of Mr. Roll's, I think 2025 is the deadline.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
That's, that's definitely completely finished, correct?
Technically, we have until 2028, I believe, is the actual deadline, but we do not anticipate that long. Once the geopack is nailed down-
Right.
Then you should expect things to go very quickly.
Oh, I thought, okay, I was, I don't know why I-
We have one dart, so we have multiple dozens. One for the per count, the one for the playground is 2024.
Right.
So, that's sort of what's, the tail is wagging the dog. That 2024 is making everything else. We're all trying to meet as much of that can get done by the end of summer in 2024 to meet that one grant deadline as we-
And then earlier you said, when, and I maybe I misunderstood too, the geotechnic, the first two didn't really want anything to do with it because we weren't at 12 or 15 million. We, we didn't have enough cash for them. So, we were looking for a third one.
We have a third one.
But Condor was up there, so we after another geotechnic?
Yes.
So, we going after another one to see if there's a different one if you wanted?
So, basically, Condor, at several, their geotechnical group left and formed their own company. And that is the company we are currently in touch with and are trying to hire. But it took until Friday of last week to get that resolved. Condor is too busy on their chicken project to help us out with anything. And the people before that read Condor's geotechnical report and saw our budget and said, man.
Okay. So, then, when you estimate geotechnic, I mean, this is the final geotechnic, or is it-
I hope it will be. I hope they'll be able to look at what Condor did and then tell us what Condor have already said initially, which was, you need to do some boards here, here, here. Those get done and then we have our final answer. And then we can go with our actual plan that we can start and we-
Chop into pieces.
Throw some pieces on the board, start talking to people and see what we need to rearrange.
So, what's the timeline roughly on that? Four, three, or four spots and get a report back?
You know, it's a wild guess on my part-
It's wild?
If they have to do testing, less if they don't.
And then, so we got 30 days for geotechnic and then-
No, then they're ready, they've already done a couple site plans for us, but because of geotechnical issues, they had to throw them away.
Okay, so Boyer's just kind of sitting on a couple different plans?
Yeah.
So, within 30 days, we should have another site?
Does that sound all right?
With the community group or what we're putting together?
Yeah.
So, the 30 days past that, we could probably have a map ready to go?
Yes.
Okay.
That's our vote. Obviously, something blown up-
So, there's more of a key note?
All right, then remind us about, who's the project manager on this project? Okay, and then, did we have a timeline? So, say, Allen, just to check, I understand that, but what I'm asking is-
It's been dependent, and I guess, as I say, we've got multiple paths going on, right? Because the playground has to happen before the rest of it. The bathrooms have to be ordered, because there's a timeline on that. So, some of it will get done before other parts. We had always, even when Boyer had responded to the RFP, his original timeline would be, would be done by 2025. Yeah. But we also didn't expect the 22, 23 winter storms, which the league, the river removal, couldn't start until everything kind of dried out. We had to get on their calendar. And then, you know, we thought, well, as soon as the degree, you know, degree's gone, then, you know, we can, we can keep working simultaneously with the way we're going. It was the geotech that kind of throws the real move. So, you know, Robert has been trying very hard to push as far as he can to try to get this going. He feels, he feels horrible that he doesn't have, he can't generate a site plan because of something that he can't control. So, he's, you know, he's been locking up doors and calling, you know, as much as he possibly can to try to get someone on the docket that can make a decision. You know, and I have to say, you know, he's the contractor. And there are things that he has to abide by in order for his own company to back him or his interests to back him. So, I mean, he, he can't just go out, do whatever if this is sitting there. So, that's why he's really been trying to push for, you know, shore it up, give us some additional information. And Todd is absolutely correct, and this has been my argument all along. If, if this is the case, then no one in Calaveras or Twollem or Yamador should be building anything for it. And, you know, this is, and I've seen it, I've lived through it long enough, things don't just like fall in. You might have a settling thing, a little crack here or whatever, but it's not like the, the land is open rather than small and chill. The, the park has been there for 100 years.
1900 is when they first started talking about it. And we, okay.
Nothing is open enough in that park. Fallen down.
Right, limits is grew up.
Yes. Well, and it was, it was a slow- Isabel, in, in response to your question, to help with that, so the, in the grant itself, the timeline goes out to 2028. So, we gave ourselves the maximum amount of time possible knowing about the funding. We did not want to potentially lose funding. So, when we're telling you about a timeline, it's an accelerated timeline because we do not want to see it torn up apart that long. We want to see it go back to usable things, Amy.
Okay, and then, sort of to reiterate what Trevor said, at the August 1st meeting, I had requested both a timeline as well as a budget, more so an effort of full transparency. This is a public project and I asked that I have, you know, and I'm asking for this not for me, but obviously for the people I represent, which are sitting out there. And so, once again, I'm going to ask for a budget and I would like for that to be broken down by trade, so by vendor. I'd like to know where we stand, what we've spent so far, what we're projecting to spend in terms of timeline. Even if nothing happens, I would like to see that in every meeting. As I said, at that August 1st meeting, this is our biggest project and we owe it to the people and to, like I said, those that we represent. And I know, I think the comment last time was, someone said that they didn't have kids. I don't have kids, but I'm not up here for me. I'm up here for everybody that I represent, which are all the constituents of the city. And having said that, we owe it to them to have that budget, to have that timeline. And I do expect to see that at every single meeting. And I expect to see it at the beginning of the meetings, that way that those that are attending this don't have to wait until the very end, but they can call in, they can show up, they can get that update and move on. Because, yes, Trevor, people don't know what's going on and it's really sad and disheartening that people don't know. They shouldn't have. And they shouldn't have to come to a meeting to know that. So, that is it. Those are my questions. And actually, another one, the geotechnical report, so obviously, there was one from 2007.
We, remind me, dear, that was my question. What did that geotech report from '07 determine?
It determined that approximately at least one acre of it should have been developable. It was the one that Mr. Kitchener did for his office buildings. It determined that he could put office buildings on the parcel that we bought.
So, can you kind of pinpoint where that one acre, what, just for my ignorant?
Yes, scroll, if you could scroll down.
Oh.
Keep going, keep going, keep going. Keep going, keep going, keep going. Going, going, going. That was 22.
I guess I'm not understanding where that is in relation to the other site map.
Here's the bottom of the pit, here's our parking lot, where it ends right now.
The circular. We're going to go all the way in.
Okay, so here's the kitchen?
Yeah, 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 okay.
And here's the parking lot, here's that, here's the equipment that you see. So, his buildings were all coming in here. So, there's his buildings and so they investigated this part and said, yep, you can build there. Here, we, we would rather you avoid it unless we go do a whole bunch of core samples. Here, we'd rather you avoid it unless we go do a whole bunch of core samples. We never anticipated putting anything up here because obviously it goes straight up.
Okay, so, based on that 2007 geotech report, we can, we got this date today, you're saying we cannot move forward with the amphitheater there? It is changed?
I'm saying that the preliminary responses that we have received-
Now?
-indicate that, and we have to go with an engineer, a geotechnical engineer, that it may cost more than its worth to go through and determine every square inch of this that may be buildable, that could be engineered, and they don't want to use a focal reflector in order to determine that. So, what they're trying to do is find an economical way to test for where we can build with structures and where we cannot. And our understanding has always been that there is at least one acre of that that can have a structure.
We have the ability to resize the amphitheater and make it smaller to fit an area-
Yes.
-on that map. So, it might be more like a stage and a couple roads.
Yes.
It doesn't need to be ironstone.
Correct.
Okay, so, I definitely think that we need to, to clarify that because I don't want to continue to spend money. How much money has been spent of the $3 million budget on reports?
We can spend anything on reports. We purchased the property, so-
Right, but you're saying that we've done another report that came back recently?
No.
We haven't got anybody, nobody was there.
No one has gone in and done another report.
Right.
So, these are initial engineer that are looking at the, that are looking at that-
Not willing to.
And that are saying, or don't have it, or don't have a plan. So, it's trying to nail someone down who will take a minute to go through this, identify where we can do just some basic testing, just for structural. And that's what's taking time. We're not, we haven't got any, like, Boyer hasn't charged us anything.
Because he's, he's going to design and build.
Right.
So, Condor has not come out with another report since '07? But we can't move forward with just this? This is not adequate. We need an engineer soon?
Yes.
Okay.
Why wasn't this getting done while we were waiting to do the tree?
Because we had to hire, because we were hiring the contractor, going through the RFP process and putting them under contract. And once we did that, then they could start.
So, that, but the contractors, not the geotechnical engineer?
No, but they, for the RFP, were responsible for that. We think that was.
So, I, I think that's where my, mine goes, is that if we can get some clearance to put something structural on a section, and we, we, I understand we need to mark those boxes. We need to build the amphitheater, we need to bodge the courts, we need all the things that we're obligated to provide as part of our grant. And I, I, my mind is wondering, you had said a couple times that maybe we choose a playground in a non-favorable area, but I'm thinking, well, what's a playground way as opposed to a small down version of an amphitheater? I think that we need to, and I think that's what the public is looking for.
And I'm not qualified to answer that question, none of us, unless, except for an engineer is qualified to answer that question and having looked at it. So, there's the speculation.
Okay, so then, timeline that Allen was touching on was about 30 days hopefully for-
Geotech.
The geotech commitment and then another 30 days for the lawyer to put a plan down.
A draft plan to be reviewed by the stakeholder.
Do you think it would be, I think it would be fair and reasonable to start the process of establishing your stakeholders and your outreach?
Which we have already done, yes.
I feel that we, a lot like what Isabel said, I, I feel that we failed miserably on outreach for community outreach and public, public outreach on this project. Otherwise, we wouldn't have been hearing so much of that tonight and over the last several months. So, everyone sees the trees go down and they think, oh, great, you know, the anticipation and the expectation is that we were going to start construction right away and it wasn't the case for all these reasons, which just didn't help things publicly. So, I definitely think we need to do better with public outreach this time around. Quickly, I know the answer, but can you please, can you explain back on the site plan, Rose, can you back on like page three or whatever it was? Can you clarify the disadvantaged community comment on the map?
Yes, it is actually a term used by the state of California that identifies income levels that are less than 80% of median income.
And that's typical for a grant application?
It is typical that they want to include disadvantage.
This is not a homeless in Canada.
There was a lot of-
This is basically just the neighborhood on the other side of the highway.
Honestly, it happens to be the way they draw things, because you'll notice that's the highway. It was convenient for them to draw the line at the highway. Is that actually exactly where the 80% median income levels are? No, it's not.
Oh, no, no. It's not indicative of the neighborhood.
No, no, no.
Listen, it's a- I understand.
They pick and, so it's, it's nothing that's being designed to be that way and it's for grant funding.
Well, that was a question. How big is a sample theater supposed to be? What are you trying to?
It will be as big as we can fit on there.
But, but you got to match a park with a theater?
Correct.
The children's playground is so small. Right, to an amphitheater, who all get played with every day.
That's why we'd need the sideline in order to know how much park in here sure would be most appropriate. And we will know the size of the amphitheater we can have once we know the geotech. Chicken and egg, we need to know that geotech in order to do the size of the amphitheater, in order to convince everybody.
Okay, we're, once again, public comment, so, so we have a couple other council members. I still have some more questions, but go ahead, Caroline, you're up. No, go ahead, time to find you.
Uh, one of the comments online was about funding secured and yes, we do have funding secured, so I think that's important to let people know. I too have some, my notes here about the amphitheater, can it just be simplified to meet the needs of the grant, but just be simple enough that we could put it in the canyon so that it's not really compared with people? And I know about the size and-
Needing engineers.
Yeah. But it just doesn't, I'm, I'm not thinking like Hollywood Bowl kind of size. And then, the Plan B regarding the geotech, so if we can't secure this offshoot company from Condor, what's our Plan C?
Define one.
Okay, yeah, because I think, you know, obviously, the community's getting ham-sy and like, we, we need to be moving on this.
And, and we understand that, however, we do not want something that is not safe.
Yeah, as far as the timeline, I, I do kind of, I, I get both Isabel, Councilmember McCottis and, and the challenges of not having that, but also we don't have a plan yet to put into place. So, I guess the timeline I'm looking for would be maybe just this immediate stuff that, so that we can put that out there and let people know.
Yeah, I mean, I think we, and just that, we haven't really spent anything on the grants so far, so.
We have, we have purchased the property.
Well, they're saying, but as far as like contracts and things-
We have the-
And we have the, um.
And then the, yeah. Um, and then, uh, communication, I agree wholeheartedly with the entire, um, council on that, definitely, uh, need to do better, especially with those folks who are gonna be in this construction zone and letting them know when certain things are happening.
We are planning a dedicated page, I believe, on our website.
We have a dedicated page, um, we also just contracted for a yard, uh, through our utility building system. So, the nice part is everyone who lives in the city is also a utility customer, water and server, water washer. Uh, so now we, you will actually be able to, um, get kind of by area, everyone who is in there, um, so we will be able to do that outreach. Um, Amy and I also sat through a down with, um, Esri, um, that's a big hole that we have at the city, we just do not have access to GIS. And so, um, we would be able to again utilize that, um, as a way to kind of, similar to what we need to do with, um, when there's a planning, you know, change.
Three hundred, issue around.
Yeah, so that would give us the ability to identify who was all there and then do the outreach that way as well. So, I mean, we, we looked at different ways that we could do better at, at doing outreach. Um, I think old-fashioned paper for, at least the people who are affected by construction because some of them might be renters and they're not going to see the water bill. It's gonna go to a homeowner, the homeowner's step.
So, our access, exactly, well, that, you made a really important point. Um, we always had access to, oh, and they're, right, we do not always know.
Exactly, so just, I think, just for that area too, it's just important to make sure that they're not landlocked, um, for, you know, twenty-four hours. So, I think that's it for my, uh, my side.
And then in terms of outreach, um, we, we have a functioning website now, we issue press releases, we have, um, a Facebook, um, presence which we don't have before, and we now have a city newsletter that went out for the first time. Um, you know, and then kind of working with Public Works, um, you know, that's something that I've had a conversation with staff as well is, you know, right now, they're currently going door-to-door, creating theaters, sometimes we might be able to give us upon that, that urge to draw additional information off.
So, adoring. Can we also ask, I know that, I know the trees were abrupt and it was, it was, it was a lot to see the trees, we all have stayed at the trees, but in the meantime, the park is in disarray. So, everything that otherwise could be alive and, and vegetated is, is looking dead and in not looking watered down, I think, I mean, can we also, so, can we also make an effort to try to clean the park up as best and then, and the, and the right of way, I think that everything looks a little bit abandoned and abused, uh, even though it is in construction. So, I think, I definitely think that we need to put our effort with our, our public touch department in our right of way and cleaning, I mean, I know it's construction and construction's always a lot to deal with, but it could look a lot better than it does, both with some water and some cleaning and sweeping and, and pruning, not what we have. Uh, in, in addition to like.
We, we just pruned everything, so actually part of our rest reports us to actually go and finish trimming the trees, we did do that. Um, we are watering the trees, um, because there is no irrigation out there. When, when things were pulled out, the irrigation lines were broken, uh, so part of the plan is also to put new irrigation throughout the park, it comes part of the construction project as well as landscaping. So, there's a, there's a limitation on what we can do, um, without spending money and putting in a new irrigation system. But we do, um, bring the hydrobacter out, we are regularly doing those trees. We put that fencing up to try to keep people out and.
And what about by the guardrail, there's quite a bit of weeds that are just, you know, real quick to notify people, they gotta clean up their land, but we, it seems like we can go less bad. I mean, guardrail, there's quite a bit of weeds as well as on boosterway over that.
Same way too.
You can hardly see around the corner.
As well as, yeah, I, I think all right of way, mainly on the highway, like even the new sidewalk across from, uh, US Bank, um, the construction area, those stakes can be removed and the weeds can be pulled, we can just try to make it, I know it's construction and it's not easy, but to make it look, uh, good as possible.
And I actually just wanna ask, so old-fashioned coffee-er, we can't just print some coffees and leave those at people's doors that live on the beautiful lane like we do in, yes, the businesses.
We can't, that's why we say, we take, you know.
You just said sometimes, or, so I wanted to just be sure that we will do that.
So, can I do one thing? Will you step back? There was a picture of my brother when he actually had a black beard.
Oh, that I think was the farmer.
Yeah, that's it, yeah, oh, he's only got the two gray streaks, now we have one, yeah.
Can you take a picture?
Oh, right. Can you send Alvin that photo?
Yeah. So, my only thing is, and I do apologize, is there has not been that great outreach and, and people's feelings are hurt, that's, that's not acceptable for the whole night long. But we, I was part of this fireman's Sunday with my brother and everybody else, there's been outreach since 2019 or prior on all this. There's been the community club, there's been the grant, the whole formation of it. This has been ongoing for years and this is amazing out here because this is the first time I've seen this group here in this many numbers, it's awesome. Come to these things, be careful of social media, social media can get like a whole hornets nest stirred up in a heartbeat, um, get involved and, or please, please, definitely get involved and join that community club with Jeremy Leonard, Jeremy Wood, John Rolio, get your voice in there and be heard, so that's all I.
Yeah, I think you, I thought that, that's why I'm so adamant about wanting the information of a projected timeline, it doesn't, you know, draft, what is it, can't charts are constantly changing, um, of getting that out there so that way that people have a place to go to see this information.
Absolutely.
Good.
And I do think, Trevor, I've seen you on social media, try to be the middleman and be the voice of reason a lot when people are kind of on a, on a rampage. I wanna thank you for that because you've tried. Um, one thing that we'll say again, we said in the last few meetings, the majority of us up here, we choose not to engage in social media because we are bound by rules of the Brown Act and such, so we really can't engage in that platform, this is our platform, this is how we can and this is how we will, but please, um, do what you can to share what we do post formally and officially on social media, some of the other pages out there, we don't, uh, we don't, we don't have any, any official, uh, threshold over, so, um, thank you for that. And Amy, this research or the history and the backstory was really helpful tonight, I think, to a lot of people because 2019 was great outreach, I do think we, we've missed the construction outreach and I, and we're gonna do better on that and I'm quite.
And, and just, just to put it out there, I, I've worked on projects like this before. Um, this is not unusual, um, it, it's like remodeling your kitchen and you just get ready to go nuts after a while. Um, worked on the park in Oakdale, similar kind of response when they first saw how things were changing, but when it's done, we hope it'll be something you'll be proud of and have taken part in and look forward to working with you on it.
And feel free to reach out to any of us, our emails are all on the website, you know, I know I see a lot of you out in town, so if you have questions about it, you know, pull me aside and ask and have me to be or any of us, we're happy to answer questions. If we don't have an answer, we'll get back to you.
Thank you. Okay, so having said that, I'd like to have a, a small break. Sam, if you can turn the camera, maybe just a five-minute bio break and then we'll be back for item B.
Thank you.
Okay, we will resume the, uh, city council meeting. Thank you for your patience, um, we're going to return with the regular agenda, item 8B, and that is to approve resolution 2369 for a community resilient grant, center grant that, and then authorize the mayor to sign the letter of a commitment with minor changes. Rebecca. Oh, sorry, Amy.
Uh, Mayor, council members, this is for a community resilience center grant, we were looking at doing a rehabilitation of City Hall and expanding it to include an area where there could be a meeting facility, perhaps, um, emergency response, we have met with Sierra Hope and we have met with Common Ground, the idea being that we could have social services there as well as emergency operations there, as well as City Hall there, um, have meeting rooms that we, we wouldn't always have to meet in the, um, fire station for City Hall, we could have a senior center by day and City Hall, city council chambers at night, um, meetings for other people as well as we have a fairly unique greenhouse gas emissions reduction plan that will be coming before you, that has fairly unique programs that talk about training, um, youth, um, adults in a classroom setting and we've talked to potential partners about being able to do that, the idea being taking biomass, for example, and converting it into some sort of fuel, um, and that's something that if we had put all that together in this kind of a center, they do ask for both a resolution and a letter of commitment, not quite sure why they need both, but that's what's before I wanna be having any questions.
Questions? Okay, seeing no questions up here, any members of the public have any questions or comments? Um, Rose, I'll let you know if you see anybody online. Okay, bringing it back to council, I'm looking for a motion for resolution 2369. So, I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is to adopt resolution 2368, which is approving an agreement between the City of Angels and the Department of Forestry and Fire Protection for the Volunteer Fire Capacity Grant, Nathan Frank. Oh, there it is. Oh, I'm reading the agenda, I'm here, it does seem.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So, back in, in April, we applied for the Volunteer Fire Capacity Grant for ten items of needed replacement. Beginning of August, we received notification that they approved seven of the ten items. So, um, it is a fifty-fifty grant, so we got approved for a total of eight thousand three hundred seventy-one dollars and fifty cents. So, by, like, seven items, I won't tell you what they are, uh, wild and fire body gloves, wild and no expense, uh, wild and fire shelters, uh, structural firefighting gloves, firefighting flash hoods and three sets of turnout, structural turnout gear. Uh, we would like to go ahead and, and make these purchases and we would like to use the CalFire knowledge for our course.
Questions or comments from council?
The only question I got is, I'm assuming you may have eight thousand three hundred seventy-one dollars and fifty cents in this trying to have a little improvement and then can go to that one hundred percent of problem. But yeah, there we go.
We have, we're over a hundred thousand. Anybody else?
Pull the go figure, Mark.
We have ten thousand dollars for a set, that's the maximum you get.
Okay, public comment on this item. Seeing no public comment, knowing that we have the funding, I will be looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second, um, Isabel, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item HD, this is to adopt resolution 2341, authorizing the industrial disability retirement of Police Officer Stephen Samper. Red.
We originally brought this item to you back in April, um, and you, at that time, you did approve the resolution, however, helpers is very, um, particular on how the resolution needs to be written and, um, they also need to know if we're going to, um, provide the advanced disability prepayment often. So, we, in the last resolution, we didn't have that, um, so we included it in this resolution along with some language cleanup that first requested, so we can hopefully get this process moved forward.
So, this is just specific?
It's a revised resolution.
Watch them, come on. All right, questions, anybody? Public comment? Seeing no public comment, we'll bring this item back for motion.
Make a motion for resolution 2341.
I'll second that motion, Rose. All in, or, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item is 8E, that is the adoption of resolution 2371 approving HRA, which is Health Reimbursement Arrangement Plan Change for Administrative Cost and Resolution 2372, termination of the HRA.
Okay, so, um, we have a health reimbursement arrangement, uh, that was approved, uh, in 2014. Um, the city provides some level of health insurance contribution towards retiring health. Um, depending on when you retire, it could be quite significant, um, all the way down to, we are only gonna pay for the technical, somewhere in between. So, depending on when you retire, whichever MOU you were represented by, that determines the level of. Back in 2013, it was, um, brought to city council to create this health reimbursement arrangement, which I'm not against them, um, they make a lot of sense when you are, um, trying to build a, um, when you're, when you're trying to create, um, basically retiree health plan contributions to an individual as a benefit that would potentially maybe be portable. So, you'll see these happening a lot nowadays with agencies eliminating retiring health in lieu for, um, contributions towards the HRA. And then if that employee, um, if that employee retires from the agency or the, you know, quit and go somewhere else, they can take, that's, that's for benefit, they just live with them or a third or a third party. But when you do that, it doesn't create any future obligation to the agency. What this is, is this was a way to contribute to this plan and then the plan would then just cut a check to the retiree every month. So, um, it's not like it was, there wasn't really a, um, a, like, really good reason to do this, other than it took the administrative burden off staff. But at the end of the day, we have ten retirees, they get checks cut to them and we're paying thirteen hundred dollars a year to help Mid-America do it. And there's fifteen thousand dollars in the account. So, you know, the level of administration is very small. Um, prior to 2013, the city cut the checks to the retirees, um, from 2013 to present, uh, Mid-America has, which we have gotten caught in the middle several times where the retiree is contacting us because they didn't get their checks or they, you know, whatever the issue is. So, it, it's, it's just created a kind of, probably a lot more administrative burden with us not taking care of it than what we thought it did from it. So, at this point, the recommendation is to go ahead and change the current plan so that we can actually pay for the administrative costs, um, out of the proceeds that are in there because it's been earning interest on the pre-advance that we gave it and then since 2013, it just keeps earning interest and just sits there in the trust. So, we can actually, um, have administrative charges for Mid-America, just paid for directly out of the trust. Um, and then, once it, um, once it zeros out, then we can go ahead and terminate it. You can't close these until they're zeroed. So, it's not like we can say, Mid-America, just send us the money, we'll take it from now and we'll cut, cut the retirees' checks. It has to be zeroed out at the plant level first. So, we just would cease contributing any more money to Mid-America. They would continue to cut the checks to the retirees, they would pay for the administrative charges out of the balance that's there and then, once it's zeroed, then we would enforce the termination and then we would take over making payments to the retirees directly. So, that, that's all this is, um, it saves us money in the long run because we have fifteen thousand dollars sitting there and keep contributing money to it, so there's always this like hanging fifteen thousand dollar balance that's there year over year over year. Um, it saves us from having to pay this administrative cost, which would involve thirteen hundred dollars every year, um, because we wouldn't have to do that. Um, and the only changes that happen on an end. And the only changes that happen on an annual basis is PemCA changes. It's based on a cost of living increase, so every year, helpers will increase that PemCA by 2%. But that's it.
Question?
How long do you think it's going to take to 10 years now?
No.
To close it out? Maybe by next May, I think. I mean, it's not that.
Sorry. It won't take us hours.
Making the payments to the 10 individuals, two out of that, correct? And the administrative payment.
Four quarters. Yeah.
But we'll know exactly when we need to start cutting the check direct when they're not going to, I'm not going to ever go without them.
No. So once this, once this gets passed, then I'll communicate with them tomorrow. They will give us a census report of the retirees and the current information that they have for them. So we'll be able to have all of that, add the same information and contact information, which then we will reach out to all of those retirees just to say, "We're going to change it." So your checks, you know, starting in, and we'll just have to look at exactly what month that's going to be, will be coming from the City of Angels instead of from Mid-America.
Public comment? Seeing no public comment, looking for a motion. There's two resolutions. Modify 2371 and terminate 2372, the two resolutions.
So second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yep. Changing this item, this is discussion and recommended upholding, discussion and recommendation regarding the Medbury APN 064004033 co-compliance and upholding the notice and order to obey with an extension. Rebecca.
Okay, so at the last meeting, Mr. Medbury came to public comment as well as several of the neighbors with, with reverence to Mr. Medbury's issue. So basically, the staff report is just a history of how we got to this point and also the specific municipal codes and health and safety codes that co-compliance identified as being the violations. We have done, and this is not just with Mr. Medbury, this is with all the co-compliance, we've really tried to do a soft camp with everyone, should try to get as much self-compliance as possible. The idea is to, as much as possible, not go to the administrative part just because it's, it's lengthy, that's where it's a lot more expensive to go through that process. And certainly, we would prefer self-compliance than having to go to the point where we have to beat something ourselves and then slap a lien on the property. That's not, that's not ideal. So we've worked for a very long time with Mr. Medbury on this particular issue. It originally came to us as a complaint. We are a complaint-driven co-compliance city. So we received complaints that someone was living in a, in a trailer out there. We contacted him and got information in terms of, you know, what his story was. At the time that he, that we approached him, he didn't have a building permit and he had a whole bunch of that. So we've been working with him quite significantly to try to get him in compliance just in terms of having a building permit. But that has, that has been hard. The co-compliance officer ultimately issued a notice of order on August 16th, and the compliance date was September 18th of 2023. Our recommendation, just because we're working with legal counsel to get additional information in terms of what the next steps are and what options we have out there, would come to us and tell, we could bring that to you at the next meeting, which would be on the 19th.
19th.
Right. So because of that, that's the date after he would come to apply. So our recommendation is to push the, that enforced, that code date, compliance date off to the end of the month. That way, you've got additional information in terms of what legal requirements we have in order to move forward with any sort of enforcement measure. And, you know, I think we've been trying to work with planning to identify some additional temporary options that we could have. Mr. Medbury did ask if he could have his trailer just be considered a construction trailer. But even with that, you know, what we've been looking at is a commercial construction trailer. So I'm not sure if it would fit within there either, but we haven't brought that forward yet as well. So we have actually a lot of complaints about people sleeping in trailers, whether that's on public or private property. That tends to be a complaint that we get on a regular basis. So I just want to bring, you know, your memory back to what Armus said, limited propositions here, but is we can't do subjective enforcement. So if we are going to enforce on one, we have to enforce on all. If we're not going to enforce on one, then we don't enforce on any. So just bear that in mind, that that is, that is an issue that we have. This is not uncommon. This is not uncommon that we come across, but we enforce every single one of them that comes, comes along because it does violate health and safety. There is not legal access in most cases to water, sewer, power. And so those are the biggest state health and safety issues that, that we would, you know, that we would tie to. And then we listed off all of the other violations. And these are directly out of our municipal code. So we've continued to try to work with Mr. Medbury. My recommendation also is that before this September 19th meeting, we would ask that we get documentation that a purchase or information that demonstrates that the manufactured home that Mr. Medbury is, is purchasing, at least we can show a production date on it. So we can see production scheduling, all the comments that need to be responded to for CSG because there's still comments outstanding from them in terms of plan review. And our building inspector was also in communication with the designer and he's being called up because of those comments as well. We do need engineered or professional to review and sign off on solar plans with proper calculations. We need fire sprinkler plans, we need site plans, and we need payment of sewer fees and payment of mitigation fees, because both of those are not met. So I think that effort being presented to the city council at the meeting on September 19th gives you a good idea in terms of if the progress is sufficient, we continue to have this whole conversation about it.
So I do have a quick question. You just mentioned things that need to happen to get on track. Are those in addition to the five items, which is remove the recreation trailer, stop all non-permitted land use stuff?
Yes, because these are co-compliance issues. I'm just saying on the building permit side, we're hung up on the building permit side, totally separate from co-compliance side. But the main part of the argument is if you let it stay there, you know, I can keep working. But we're not seeing the amount of progress that needs to happen on the building permit side. So, you know, I think that's my, that's my concern is we're not seeing a little progress on the other side.
One of the violations is 1706/10, restrictions on building construction land use. It says, "No building and structure or land supplements unless it is permitted in the zone which the land is located." Is there a zoning issue with this property or that's just a violation for, it's not zoned for this use?
It, it's that you can't build onto an existing structure. Yeah, so, so what, what co-compliance is seeing when they go out there is they'll see another structure that they didn't notice the last time they went out there.
Okay. So an alteration.
So we just need building to stop completely until we have a building permit, site plan. But things that need to be in, in the building department's plans and reviewed and signed off on should happen before you continue to do any site work, any building, any construction that they find.
And so you're saying as of today, where's, where is he at with the building permit in anticipation for having a modular come in December, before December, is that possible with this timeline?
I don't know, because as of Friday, this is where it was. Still no site plan, still no comments responded to, you know, the kind of the list of things that are in here, they're still all else.
First thing, Havon?
Somebody else go first, because I got right now the key one. I don't think any.
I think my question is, where are we at? I, I do wonder if Mr. Medbury is either building a home or purchasing a manufactured home. I, I thought I had, I thought I was under the impression that he was building, so maybe, maybe that would all come with the building permit. And then the next steps for moving forward, how can we get you back on the track? So.
I'm happy to explain if you want.
So I think at this time, I will open public comment and maybe Mr. Medbury can take the podium.
Are you giving time minutes only or an additional?
Let's see how long it takes. I think if he needs some more time, this would be appropriate. Thank you.
All started climbing.
Okay, I'm not going to talk very much. I'm just, my name's Mike Medbury, I'm in 1848, Finney and Lane. I've got a proposal for building place and I've gotten, I've got all the money paid to the builder, the person that's putting together the building. And I've gotten one bunch of comments on the first time I submitted my proposal and the PMHA submitted the proposal. And so this is in process. It's pretty overwhelming process. And I've gotten more information that's been given to PHMI, there's a big lead on it and they'll give it back to me. And that should be within this week. And I will carry it on my hands to the building inspector. And I just hope that it'll go somewhere.
So are you building or did you order?
I.
Just want clarification on Dan's question. Did you, are you building a home? Does it take your letters at something about 600 square foot?
Yes.
But then is that a manufactured?
It's manufactured and they're going to deliver it to me on a, a trailer, some kind of.
Flatbed?
Pardon?
Like a flatbed truck?
Yeah, one flatbed. And they'll put them up, they'll.
So, so think of it like a kid's house.
It's not, it's not, it's not a modular home that has sheetrock rights and you just stitch them together. You still have to do.
It's that, the walls will come with, you know, this sheathing and the, the rafters going to be built.
Right.
And I'll set them up and then, you know, we'll sheet the roof, it'll be really thick.
Right, you saw some, you saw some plumbing, electrical, insulation.
Right.
Sheetrock, paint, tape, texture, flooring, compliance, all that stuff still.
Yes, and I've got beds on several of those.
So you, you just got the frame and the shell, it'll be enclosed.
Yes.
Okay. Second.
No, I was just saying so the shell, in general, okay.
Okay, I have a question.
So do you, do you have a clear understanding of the, the communication from city staff about the, the violations and the, and the things that are missing and the things that are wanted? Is it, do you have an understanding?
I understand it. I don't agree with it. I think it was premature and it was inappropriate, terribly inappropriate, because I've been working to clean up this, you know, one and a half acres, 1.6 acres. I've done nothing but clean it up and all the people who were coming and just vagrants that would come there and, you know, I tried to give them the impression that, you know, you need to go. And that's been supporting, I've had support from a lot of other people and exactly that.
So yes, I've heard the same exact thing, that, that you have been a major help down there. But at this point, you, like, your well, right? You state the letter, there's, there's a hand dug well.
No, 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 no.
What was that?
The well is, was dug several years ago. It was drilled, producing and actually using the water. It's, I've got a report on it, I've got two reports.
And you turn those in and everything's out of the factory?
Well, you know, I'm giving it to PHMI and they have to give me the information because they're trying to get the, the, the whole circumstance through. I mean, it's really complicated.
Well, and how, how are you pumping that water? Is, is your, is electrical panel done there? Is it all on solar? Is it powered off a generator?
It's on solar.
So it's not, it's not, so it is solar?
Solar.
Just a couple of solar panels and a battery? Did you install or you had an, an electrical company come and install a solar?
It pumps it up to a tank, 2,500 gallons, and then it will come downhill to my house.
So that is, that's the way it's operating today?
Yes.
Okay. And then sewer, you still don't have a sewer connection, correct?
That's right. And it's been really difficult to work with the city to get their approval of something. You know, I'm just, I've tried to get the sewage connection defined and there was one that, somebody had lived there before me and they had a sewage connection and that was, you know, just was pretty much done, but their, their house burned up. And so I'm trying to figure out if that's still appropriate for me to get to it or if there was another one that's, would be straight downhill, that would be more appropriate. And I haven't gotten any response.
And, and we didn't get there, the sewer fees need to be paid. And, and we still can't permit the trailer to connect to the sewer. We still cannot permit your trailer to connect to the sewer.
No, I don't want it.
Right. But sewer, the sewer fees need to be paid, the mitigation fees still need to be paid. So.
Okay, well, lay it on me.
And are you going to hook up the PTD or are you going completely off-grid solar?
Off-grid.
You're going completely off-grid?
Because PTD gave me a bid for, well, not a bid, but they suggested that I would have to pay about $80,000.
Oh, yeah.
So it's a solar.
So is this, as I say, it's a solar, it's a solar prevented and you're going to have to do battery, batteries and generators?
Yes, I've got batteries, that's on the side.
And that all has to be inspected still too? And in, in your letter, you said in the, because I'm looking at it right now, and I do appreciate the letter and it is a pretty piece of property, I've seen it.
It is.
You know, you hope to be living in my house before deep winter descend. I just don't know. We're already mid-September, October, and November, only a couple months. Wow!
I know.
You don't even have sewer connection, you don't have power there yet.
I'm.
You don't have the, you don't have a site plan done, correct?
I have a site plan, I've got three versions of it and it's just, I'm waiting.
On Friday, we don't, as of Friday, when I talked to the staff, we still do not have engineer solar electric plants. On Friday, we still don't have a final site plan for you.
We should have site plan and the sprinkler deal. I've gotten that engineered and there's one other thing is, can't remember what else. There's, there's been a lot of work done and it doesn't show in what you have done to respond to me. And, you know, we, I'm sending this out to consultants and the consultants are talking with the city, I assume, and then they have to go back to the consultant. And it'd be nicer to just go to the city immediately, but. go to the city immediately, but I think that's where we're at.
So the consultants are the ones that we've asked you to work with? The consultants are the ones we've asked you to work with directly, because, you know, PHMI needs all of those pieces of information in order to be able to, to get the fire sprinkler plans, in order to get the things that we were asking for. You needed to have the well tested because the fire flows are dependent on what that says, but again, that information has to go to PHMI in order for them to draft with the fire sprinkler.
I needed to any months ago. But we're also, I've also given it to PHMI, and that's gonna come to me because they want me to deliver this, and so I'm waiting for them to respond.
Correct.
I know.
So it's not, it's not, the city's not been dragging their feet on any of this? We've responded. Paid your sewer fees.
What is?
You got to bill when you originally paid part of your fees. So I can, I can then give another copy to you, but all the fees have to be paid. If anyone came in the door to the building and planning department, and they said, I want to build X, we would give them a list of fees that they need to pay, they would pay it, and we would move forward.
I paid significant amount of money, and I thought that that was gonna at least get some of this on track, and it did.
If you paid your plan review fees in your building permit, that's a start, but there's still additional fees that need to be paid, and you're asking us to send staff out there to start looking at sewer infrastructure, but those fees have not been paid for sewer.
Well, that's news to me.
It's a conversation we've had multiple times, but that's okay.
No, that's not exactly the way I'm saying it.
So I will follow up with our building inspector again, but my question is, can you provide all this information before the September nineteenth meeting?
I think I can. The one thing that's gonna be really tough for me to do is to get the solar engineering for the soul, but I'll try and get that.
And I guess that's my concern, is, so, so, so council number, Rolio, just asked you if you have power, and you said, yes, I have power. But isn't that power what you produced there yourself?
The solar power is what I got.
Right, it's not been engineered?
It has been engineered, it, the company that designed the solar were all engineers, and they gave me a report on the engineering, and what I got, they were astounded that that was not acceptable, because it was really a lot of work that they did.
I will say I'm getting a completely different story, the problem, from our, I don't think that's.
So for me, I, go ahead.
Yeah, so I think, I think probably what needs to happen is a re, a regroup with, with your staff, and then with Mr. Medbury, maybe with an accounting of fees that are paid and what's left, I mean, it's kind of out of our threshold, our realm.
We don't know.
We don't know, yeah, so I think that maybe just an effort of having a meeting and a sit-down and clear understanding, that's kind of why I asked you, do you have an understanding of the next steps and the requirements, because it, there's a disconnect somewhere, and I'm not sure where it's at, but if it's a matter of a couple of fees, I, I'm confused.
Is there a way to provide a checklist that's?
We, we obviously.
Yeah. Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, you have to have water, you have to have sewer, and you have to have power, and we have to know when this home is coming. I mean, right now, you said you got three different site plans, you have to narrow it down to one, because how do you approve, you know what I mean? So there's, I think there's a lot of legwork that still has to be done, and it's gotta be done like tomorrow, because we have been working on this for little time, I believe, and I do want to work with you, but there's, there's a lot of stuff, there's a lot of stuff that's gotta be done still too.
Well, you know, they haven't seen what I've done, so I've done a lot of that work, it's just not there yet, it's not from PHMI to me, so I can give it to you.
So typically, that seems a little out of order to me, like typically, the plans would come first, so that when the work begins, and then the inspections happen, the inspections are validating that the work is consistent with plans, but you're kind of almost putting the cart before the horse and doing the work, and experiencing the power, or experiencing the living condition without inspections or plans, so I, I think that's the overall concern that I'm reading, is that we don't have an ordinance, it is a violation of our city ordinance to be living on a construction site in a temporary trailer. And for me personally, as much as I, I think you're a wonderful person and a member of our community, and I appreciate what your, your love and ambitions are, if we start allowing people to live in trailers on vacant lots in the city limits, we will have a problem like There Is No Tomorrow. So it is one of my personal code enforcement taboos, and, and so I really want to see you with success, and I want to see you move forward, I think we can get there, but I think you really need to listen to what the list of requirements are, unfortunately.
And are we making a recommendation?
Do you need the extension down to September?
All I'm asking is that you guys give an extension to the end of the month.
I'll make a motion to extend it to September twenty-ninth, but I say choose the time wisely.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
So wait a second.
But I'll, yeah, sorry.
Sorry. All in favor? Thank you. Administration report.
I met with Congressman McClintock today, we went on a tour of the park, not the whole system, but part of the city, um, this has for advanced hardening and reducing regulatory obstacles for the projects that we have specific to that. We had an RFP out for the rate study consultant and the city management consultant, both of those closed, so we'll all give you form and review panels, and then brief recommendations to follow those. The first, oh, sorry, the first city newsletter went out, so prior to that, I had pushed out on social media and on the website for people to sign up for it, we had a total of forty-six people that signed up for it, already opened the newsletter, he clicked on the links with the newsletter, which is for information. And then I did another social media push, just to say, hey, did you miss, did you miss the first newsletter, make sure you sign up. So now, as of today, we have ninety-five months, so, so the next one that gets out, we'll be able to get more people, we're losing contact, and the, the nice part is, between you did have some contact in Tampa, we can put together a pretty decent newsletter, it's got a lot of helpful information on that. And also working with UPUD, when we changed from council sitting on the IRWNA to staff sitting, sitting on there, it made a lot more sense, because we're closer to the actual operations of what are happening with the city, and so we can really quickly know if a grant would make sense for us or not make sense for us. So I attended, one, Chris has attended the other ones, and then I'm on the emails as well, so we're always looking at that information. So we're going to be, right now, we're just kind of kicking it around at this point with UPUD on a waterfall station joint project, so the benefit of it is, it's a drought response project, so if we were in drought, you know, we would have access to a waterfall station. The idea is to put it closer up on the UPUD side, because they have more probably wells than we doubt. That could change, but at this point, that's not the case, so it makes sense for it to be, so we're just, like I said, kind of in the initial conversations about what that means and what that looks like, but it would be a grant that we identify for who IRWNA wants.
Awesome.
That's good. I'm attending the League of Cities Conference, September twentieth through twenty-second. I also met with the APA representative, Jesse Gibbs, to discuss our revenge project, and also he will be a partner on other economic development projects with city businesses, so he's, he's, we've been meeting and kind of going over various things. And. Found about, oh, yeah, I did send that out to you.
For the month.
For the, yeah, the month. So it's, we're gonna wait on that until they kind of get their engineering, like, absolutely nailed down, there's still a couple changes, and they're still having some individual right-of-way conversation, so once they have the right-of-way appraisal now done, then we'll probably start doing some outreach. And they have a new project manager that I met with, and we're just working through trying to do the org mate project, so if they're, you know, whether it's the sidewalk project, or it's the four and forty-nine, or Francis Street, any of those projects where they're going to open up where any of our turbines are, those are particular areas where we need to go ahead and change them out, maybe because they're on an I and I watch, or anything like that, we're coordinating with them to go ahead and take that moment to move the, the water line or move the sewer line, instead of it getting buried by a sidewalk and then vibration now fails. So we're having some really good conversations with that departmentation, but that discussion in terms of the, that mobility project will be coming.
Item nine is council report, Caroline, I'll start with you.
I met with Congressman McClintock today for that meet and greet, I am leaving town, I will be gone September seventh through the fourteenth, so I will miss yet another museum meeting, but they are looking at, they're getting some new foundation members, so I think they have how many applicants, did you see?
Three.
Three, okay, great. So anyway, they're, they're working right now on building the foundation for Becca. Well, getting more stuff, that's the museum meeting on Thursday. On Thursday, okay.
I will report, we had UWPA on August twenty-second, and. And we got an update on the Hunter Reservoir Fuel Reduction Project, where we had the public hearing and adoption of the CQAD, we awarded a contract for the licensed timber operator, there's a total of one point two million dollars that was grant funded for that project. We did update our employee handbook, we did cancel the September meeting in preparation for the November power outage, or the, the.
outage.
Yeah, the maintenance.
Maintenance outage.
And prepare for maintenance for November. And then I met today with also McClintock, which was, the meet and greet, it was well attended. More thing, we had a, yeah, that's it, that's all I have, I mean, Isabel, sorry. I have nothing to report, went to the McClintock meeting, and tomorrow I talk in CTA.
Yeah. I'll be with Isabel and that, I also attended the meet and greet, Senator Gil Alvarez also had represented there today, it was really, it was a good, I think there was some good connections made, simple, and at this point, I think hopefully we get some deregulation and different things, and you touched on everything, I mean, it was all about that fuel reduction.
Yeah.
And the employee handbook, so you touched on all that, that's all.
Okay, correspondents?
Sign three letter.
Yeah, they're on.
So any questions?
Oh, I'll also be attending League Cities.
Yep.
On the twenty.
Twenty, yeah, twenty through twenty-six.
That is, this is twenty, I will also be attending twenty, twenty-first and twenty-second.
I will not. But I will be doing the golf tournament in October.
Okay. Calendar.
Um, tomorrow, museum, you said you weren't gonna be able to be there, Planning Commission on the fourteenth, so, okay. I'd like to be till, laugh on the eighteenth, and then of course, we've got our next meeting on the nineteenth, and then the League of Cities, so. Is the night of the museum still happening on the sixteenth?
No.
No?
Okay.
They don't want to compete with Rick.
Is that the one that moved to the fourteenth then?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, any items that rattle her?
Yeah, so her, she sat on the Central Sierra Economic Development District, she was the alternate.
Okay, so we need to.
She sat on CPPA as the main person. Sharato is the alternate.
She was on the West meeting.
First CPPA, yeah.
I'm the alternate, yeah.
Yeah.
I could probably, I could probably take it back.
No, that was Gretel.
Oh, Gretel. Oh, yeah, I liked CPPA, yeah.
Yeah.
I think at the next meeting, let's just have that be a item.
Yeah.
So is anything happening in the next two weeks that she's gonna be next with that alternancy where?
Yeah, because one of my committees is everyone's.
That's CPPA.
Yeah, that's CPPA, yeah.
But Dennis, Dennis normally makes it pretty quick.
She does, I, I've been getting back at her.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the Central Sierra, oh, the All Hazards, that's every Tuesday.
Everyone.
Every, no, every once a month.
It seemed like it was every week.
So that was Rolio as.
No, but I'm dropping CPPA.
We'll talk about it.
We'll talk about it.
Yeah. Let's, let's just note at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Feature agenda items?
Well, council, council appointments on various commissions. We have council discussion, council appointment for the vacancy. We will have a follow-up, just give you additional information on Medbury.
Employee retention thing, so I thought you were.
Dark is. And then we'll bring over. Budget, budget's actual, to date, there's not much in terms of the department, I'm voting for that. Central is perfect, perfect.
Just to consent, right? Just a consent item, it would be?
For the unit, yeah.
I think the intention was to actually speak to it, correct me?
Okay.
And is it okay where it's put it, the very first?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's perfect, and even if it's just.
Don't make people sit.
Yeah, yeah.
A two-second, nothing has happened, and we have nothing to report, but here's the numbers, you're, this is still what we're at.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and if there's nothing else, we're looking for adjournments.
Open.
I'll second. All in favor?
Bye.
Bye. You heard about that, congratulations.